Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board, September 2nd, 2020. Daughter. Uh, let me call the roll. I'm John Fink, Chair. John DeLeo here.
Here, but I'm still having audio problems and video problems.
Okay, well, hope you get those corrected. Mark Rich.
Here.
Rick Lyles.
Here.
Nelson Gill.
Present.
Molly Friedland. And Patrick Lyons is not with us this evening, though he has promised never to be absent again. Words he may come to regret, but it's okay, we won't let him forget. Now. Next order of business is adoption of the minutes from the August 5th meeting. Does someone have a motion regarding the minutes, please?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all signify approval. Thank you. The next item of business is election of officers. Now, normally, this is done in January, but that kind of escaped us for some reason. And so, so this evening, we will officially elect our officers, and then in January, there will be a fresh election.
I make a motion we elect John Fink as chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominees? In that case, all in favor, please?
Aye.
And we need a vice chair, yes, John?
Oh, no, I was just, I was just voting for you.
I nominate John DeLeo.
I second that. Any other nominations? All in favor, please? Aye. And now, we need a secretary. Is there a volunteer?
Any particular reason we really need a secretary?
Because.
Our secretary doesn't do it.
Because Article 18 says that we shall do that.
And also, John DeLeo, you need a secretary to sign the minutes. Because staff cannot sign your minutes.
Okay.
So, does anyone volunteer, or shall we just pick someone, and that person will hate us forever?
It's a very small job.
Hearing the operative word "small," I volunteer.
Okay. Rick, I will then formally nominate Rick Lyles, is there a second?
Second.
Aye, second.
Thank you. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Okay, that part is done. Now. Let me just see here.
Decommissioned bond, John.
Yes, we have the decommissioning bonds. You have all received them for the.
Solar?
Solar, the SU2 solar product, project. Those are the one things that, that we need to approve, and that will send the project on its way. As I assume everyone has read those.
Wasn't anybody like to know what was added? Oh.
John?
I was just gonna say, a couple days ago, when I was City Hall picking up my package, I spoke with Teresa, David Cole, and then we got Ed Baer on the phone, just to go over some point points on the decommissioning bond. Ed, I think, added a line or two, just, I thought, to cover the city's taxpayers, just to make sure that it, when it is decommissioned, that the taxpayers are not on out to dry for the cost. I believe Ed added a sentence or two that made it more agreeable to me, more acceptable. So I think we're at the point where I'm, I'm okay with this decommissioning bond.
Then we need a formal motion to accept the wording of these bonds?
No, I don't think so, because I think it was just at the final, we accepted the plan, pending our reading the decommissioning bond. If each individual member was agreeable to the bond, then we would just go sign the Mylar. I believe that's the way.
So, Ed, since you had a hand in this, of these then bearer bonds?
I wish they were.
Shouldn't resist.
I wish they were bearer bonds, or pay to the bearer, that would be great, too. But they're neither, basically, this is the applicant's way of guaranteeing the city that if the applicant isn't around, and the projects need to be decommissioned at that time, that we have what we believe to be adequate funds to do so. The adjustments that John speaks on, which we made last week, were in recognition of the fact that the $93,000 or so that is the amount of the penal, penal amount of the bond, meaning the amount that would be available if we had to do it ourselves, was based upon projections made for 20 years. And it's my understanding that the applicant has indicated that the facility could continue for up to 35 years, in which case, we ask that at the 20-year mark, the, if it's going to continue, that the cost of decommissioning be reexamined at that point. So, that feature has been added to the bond. The bond is something that needs to be renewed every year. A failure to renew the bond would be a violation of your approval, and the city could take steps as necessary to either secure, have the applicant secure a bond, or take other steps, which we don't need to discuss at this point, because I'm not sure what they would be either.
A big shade pulled across those panels.
That could happen, I suppose, yeah.
Okay, so, we should all go into City Hall. Not all together, however, and sign the Mylars. Teresa, you had mentioned something about a timing for that.
Yes, if you could come in and sign the Mylars, that would be excellent, and we will be available from during regular City Hall, office hours from 8:00 to 5:00, all the way. If we could get them signed before the end of this week, it would be awesome. And if Megan Subdivision and Kelly Estates and Tinker Hill, if the things that happened tonight pass, we'll have those Mylars available for you also.
Okay.
Just call, and Carrie or I will come downstairs and let you in and give you your pen.
Do we get to keep the pen?
Yeah, if you want to.
And that, and that, we could do that Thursday or Friday this week, is that?
Yes, you can, and you just, it, it really works if you call ahead and say, "I'll be there in 10 minutes."
No, 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 I get that, I mean, that's all good, but you, you'll be ready tomorrow to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we have the Mylars for all the solar projects ready to go. We have a Mylar ready for Megan, we have the Mylars ready for Tinker Hill, we have the Mylar.
Okay, I believe you.
And what is your thing called? Kelly Estates. So, yeah, we have Mylars available, whatever can pass. We're prepared.
Okay. Next item of business is under old business, and. The planning, under the, our Chapter 18. Where it said, "The Planning Board must determine that a ruling was, was an error for the Beethland Terrace of the August 5th meeting." The error was that the Planning Board must determine if notes can be removed from the previous subdivision plans of Beethland Terrace. So. So the item on the agenda reads, "Final review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Beethland Terraces 2A for Associated Builders Incorporated. The proposal is to buy Lot 5, Tax Map 15, Lot 33-2, a 1.84-acre parcel into two parcels, creating Lot 5A, .92 acres, and Lot 5B, .92 acres, to create a total of 13 lots in the subdivision located on the Beethland Road. All of the subject property is located in the neighborhood zone." So, having made, having made the error, I would like to have a motion that we acknowledge the error and will now work to correct that. Is there such a motion, please?
Still move.
Second, please?
Who did you count as the first?
Excuse me? Okay. We're. So, shall we approve or not approve the removal of the condition?
John?
And, yes.
I'm, I'm just trying to add in here, I'm wondering if you're supposed to approve this motion first, then go on.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, yes, all in favor of the motion, please?
Chairman, some point for discussion, please.
Okay, go on. Well, let us second the motion and then discuss it, because that's.
Seconded by John, John and Rick made first and second motions.
Okay, so, Nelson, please? Or we, we still have to approve the motion, however, I'm sorry. All in favor of approving the motion to correct our error?
Does Nelson have comments on that?
Yeah, but that would be pertinent, once the motion is seconded, is on the table, then we will discuss the motion. Okay?
Okay.
Are, are we positive we have the correct order of operations there?
I think so, yes. Because we can't, it would not be, make sense to discuss something if there's no motion on the table, unless it was some general matter. But if we're discussing the particular matter, then we need the motion to pass. So please, all in favor of the motion? Aye? Okay, Nelson?
Uh, nay, no.
Excuse me?
No, no.
Okay.
Not prepared for this motion, thank you.
Ah, um, in that case, how shall we proceed with the applicant's request to eliminate that access only from one road?
If I, if I may, I'd like to make my comment, and.
Yeah.
This can get back on the rails pretty quickly. My observation is pretty straightforward, and, and I'm looking at the agenda item for the previous meeting, Agenda Item 5, which reads, I quote, "Final plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan titled Beethland Terraces 2A for Associated Builders, Inc. The proposal is to divide Lot 5, Tax Map 15, Lot 33-2, a 1.84-acre parcel into two parcels, creating Lot 5A, .92 acres, and Lot 5B, .92 acres, to create a total of 13 lots in subdivision located on the Beethland Lo, Beethland Road. All the, all of the subject property is located in the neighborhood zone." Period, end of item. My observation and my comment is simply that that doesn't say anything about modifying anything other than subdividing the lot. So, I'm just unclear on why an approval of that agenda item was in error. It, it may not have been all that the applicant was looking for, but it was what was on the agenda before the Planning Board that day. And so, what I'm suggesting, or what I'm asking is, was there an error on this item? Or are we actually looking at new business in addition to this previous item at this point?
Ed, you're muted, Ed. Unmute yourself, please. You're still muted, oh, go ahead.
Here we go. Nelson, I, I, I think I can explain this. In addition to dividing Lot 5 into 5A and 5B, the applicant sought to establish that there is access available through Lot 5 to both roads that it fronts on. The original approval from the Planning Board only allowed access, and Teresa will have to tell you which, which way it is. It's either off Beethland or off Grandview, or one or the other. They want access off both roads, so they want that condition removed. And also, the, the plan had a condition on it that provided that the lots had to be 40,000 square feet. That doesn't appear back in 2004 or 2005, I'm not sure that there was a minimum lot size requirement of 40,000 square feet, but there isn't any longer. So, if there was at one time a legal reason for requiring the minimum 40,000-square-foot lots, it doesn't apply any longer. And in any event, the applicant is asking that those amendments, if you will, to the prior plan be approved, and that therefore, the restrictions for both lot size and the access to Lot 5 can be removed from the plan. So, there was more to the, the original thrust back in August for this applicant than to simply have the lot divided in two.
Teresa, do you wish to add anything?
Yes, excellent, Ed. The TRT report, I hope, says, what's your ideas of what to do? So there were two conditions on the plan. One of the conditions.
Oops, you're disappeared again, Teresa.
I don't, I don't know why, can you hear me now?
Yes, suddenly, yes.
Lot 5, access onto Grandview Road is a note on the plans 2002 and 2004. Only the Planning Board can remove these conditions. You have to decide if you want to remove those conditions on the plan. And then, the second item is, in the 1985 plan, it says all lots are restricted to 40,000 square feet. You have to remove that condition from that plan if you want the developer to be able to split these lots. So there's two issues. One condition is about the road. You want to remove that from the plan. Condition is about the lot size. Do you want to remove that from the subdivision plan? Issues.
If you're talking, you disappeared suddenly.
I, I, I heard all of what Teresa was saying.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, thank you, Teresa. So the two items, absolutely, the second item, all lots restricted, restricted to 40,000 square feet, that, I think, clearly represents an error. The, the access, we even talked about it last month. It still feels to me like that was simply omitted from the agenda item and not included in the motion. So, I understand, we're dealing with it this month, which is what I expected last month. But the, but the 40,000-square-feet restriction, absolutely, I see that that kind of invalidates the decision previously made, so.
Any thoughts on the access, one road or two roads? John? John DeLeo?
I think what they're asking, I mean, basically, it's, I mean, splitting that Lot 5 into two lots, I mean, they're the same size as all the other lots that have access to Grandview Road or have access to Beethland. So it's not as if we're creating, by splitting that 5 into 5A and B, that we're creating lots that don't, you know, fit into the subdivision. I mean, they're, they're basically mirror images of, of all the other lots that currently exist. You know, I think it's, you know, it's been a convoluted track to get to where we are, but I don't think by changing, by granting their request to split the lots creates any hardship for any of the other lot owners. I think it's just similar to the rest of the lots in the subdivision.
Rick?
I just had a question about the original intent of the developer, whoever, or the Planning Board, for that matter, when they said that all access had to be via the, whatever it is, Grandview or that back street, and not to Beethland, was that just about too many curb cuts or something? Do we know that? Do we know why?
My guess, Teresa, yes?
When we look at the minutes, and we look at what we've asked, Planning Board put that into a motion, and when the Planning Board put that as a condition on the plan, they do not say why they decided that. And I hope tonight, when you decide if you're going to remove these conditions, that you say why. Like John DeLeo just started to describe some ideas why, make sure, so we don't know, Rick. It's not in the record, it just happened, but we need to know why. So if this ever comes up again, and Steve brings this forward, we are amazing, and we won't have to have a meeting like this again.
My vague recollection from that time is that the concern was the additional curb cut on, on the Bee, on Beethland Road, since all lots could be accessed from Grandview. So, is the question now is whether we agree with that reasoning or not? Is there perhaps a motion regarding these items?
John, I would suggest you do one item at a time, it might be less confusing, just a, just a thought.
Okay.
And, and one more question for.
Yeah.
Whomever may know the answer. There was, I recall last month, there was discussion or a recommendation for consulting the other lot owners in the subdivision. Has, has anything like that occurred? Is there any reason to think the other owners on that, in that area, would have an opinion one way or another? And I suppose, have they received, I don't know, was that, were there a butter notices that went out for this? And have they had a chance to respond?
Teresa?
Yes, Nelson, we not only sent out notices to people that were just the butters, but just to make sure the entire subdivision received a public notice. The opportunity to come tonight or put something in writing, we have received nothing, is that correct, Carrie?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Teresa, and we get to the public hearing in a bit here, I guess. If anyone is with us, we'll hear from them, thank you.
Okay, let me say, this is a public hearing, and a member of the public may comment on this matter. Does anyone out there wish to say anything? Carrie, are you finding anyone?
Nothing on my end, John.
Okay. In that case, I shall close the public hearing. And is there a motion regarding the elimination of the 40,000-square-foot requirement?
I'll make a motion to eliminate the 40,000-square-foot requirement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
John, excuse me, John, if you could do yourself a favor and say why you made that decision. I know it's pretty obvious, because it's not in the code anymore, but if you could put that in the motion, I think it would be really good for future records.
Okay, why don't you just, why don't we just put in the minutes that it's a matter of that's no longer a requirement, but that the lots must meet current standards? Now, regarding the Beethland Road access, are we going to insist that that stay on?
Chairman, I think we still need to take the roll on the vote, I believe.
On the previous vote?
For, on the 40,000-square-feet, yes.
Okay. Could everyone just indicate by raising a hand?
Aye.
Okay. And that has passed, yes, Nelson?
Uh, no, I was just making sure you got.
Okay, yes, well, it's a wonderful hand, we like to see it. Now, about the road access on both Grandview and Beethland, what are the thoughts of the Planning Board?
If we grant access to the, to the, to the new half lot or whatever, would we also have to provide access to, onto, onto Beethland for all those other lots as well? If they ask for it?
It's a good question. Is the applicant represented here at all?
Yes.
Steve, do you have your thoughts on that, please?
No, those lots have already been conveyed. We're not taking it, we're not taking any action on the lots that have already been approved in the subdivision.
And it is your desire to have the access to Beethland?
Yes, for Lot 5A.
And is 5A at all, can it be accessed from Grandview? As a.
We'd rather have to come off onto Beethland. We measure the site distances, and they meet the current standards in 450 feet in each direction.
Just for the record, why, why don't you want any access from Grandview? Or do you want both?
No, just, 5A would be access to Beethland, and 5B would be access to Grandview, consistent with the lots that are there now, there's, there's a tier of lots on Beethland Road, a tier of lots on Grandview Road.
Okay, what would the board like to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant access for Lot 5A onto Beethland Road and access 5B onto Grandview.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please?
You see, John, I'm being, I, I'm not sorry, could you just say why? Would somebody say why they made that motion? Why it makes sense, it could be anything you want, but for the record.
I added my motion that hearing the rest of the lots in the subdivision, the lots that come out on the Beethland versus the lots that come out on the Grandview. We're just granting similar access to similar roads for a similar lot.
And second still holds, I assume?
Yes. But you need to do a public hearing, right, on the, on this public comment?
Does anyone out there wish to comment on this?
A new station alert has arrived.
And that means?
I would, I would just make the comment that, that while I'm all for limiting access to streets like Beethland, in other words, not, not a whole series of curb cuts, I don't see any reason, any way around, you know, any way that we could actually prohibit this, so, you know.
Carrie, any public comment?
No comments, John.
Okay. In that case, public hearing closed. Are we ready to vote on this motion? All in favor, please? Okay, thank you, matter is settled.
John, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question, John?
You're making an assumption that we have an answer.
Well, I'm actually asking this to Ed, am I, can I do that?
Sure.
No, Ed, I'm wondering, with these two motions that the Planning Board did, do they now have to make a motion that conditions are removed, or do we just do that? they now have to make a motion that conditions are removed? Or do we just do that? Just to clean it up?
I think it probably would be prudent, because we've been down sort of a twisted path to get here, that the board simply indicated by motion that the earlier conditions that imposed these restrictions are hereby removed.
Thank you.
That would make sense. Yeah.
Let me make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
John, any discussion? In that case, all in favor of the motion. Mark? Thank you. Motion is approved. So Ed can now sleep tight that more complications won't arise from this, and it won't interrupt his time at camp. Now, next item of business is final plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision entitled Tinker Hill Subdivision for Lisa Whitmore. The proposal is to adjust the property line between lot seven, tax map 21, lot three dash seven, and lot 11, tax map 21, lot three dash 11 of the subdivision located off the Bayside Road in the rural and limited residential zones. I am, as I did previously, I am recusing myself from this matter. John, please chair this part of the meeting.
Okay. And following up on our previous discussions, Molly, you will be voting on this agenda item. Steve Salisbury is representing the applicant. Is there anything you want to add to it, Steve? I mean, it was a pretty straightforward request.
Yes. I thought this was approved last month, so.
Well, it was set for, the agenda item said it was preliminary. We probably could have done it in one meeting, but where it was preliminary, I guess technically he's got to come back for final. So it's, it's.
No problem.
Got to go through. Any comments, Steve?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, if the board members remember, this is just adjusting a lot line between two lots, because somebody paved their driveway and took a little bit of their neighbor's driveway. So, I mean, it's agreeable between the two homeowners. So is there any discussion on the matter? Any questions?
Just confirming, there's no material changes to the plan that we looked at last month.
No changes to the plan, same plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing. And give a couple seconds to see if anybody chimes in. There wasn't any comments last month. Have there been any comments coming in?
I don't have any comments on this one.
Okay. Is there a motion? I get a motion from one of the board members, please.
A move that we accept as final, the plan review for a revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Tinker Hill Subdivision for Lisa Whitmore. The proposal is to adjust the property line between lot seven, tax map 21, lot three dash seven, and lot 11, tax map 21, lot three dash 11 of the subdivision located off the Bayside Road in rural and limited residential zones. This was previously reviewed as a preliminary plan and approved at the prior planning board.
Are you there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I can't see everybody, so Carrie, Teresa, would you make sure we get a majority?
Here's a majority. Looks good.
And going on to item seven, I'll turn it back over to John thing.
And John, Steve, we have those milars here, right?
Correct. You should have the milars ready to sign.
Right. So we can sign those when you sign the solar amendments. They're all set to go, and then Steve can get going after they all get signed.
Okay. Next item is a final plan for a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Kelly Estates for Stephen Grass. The proposal is to instruct seven duplex buildings consisting of 14 units for a total of 17,024 square feet on a 12.8 acre property located on the Bangor Road, tax map 75, lots 16-1 and 17-1 in rural and limited residential zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Jim Kaiser.
Yes, I'm here. Jim Kaiser.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We were last before you last month on preliminary approval of this project. There was a number of comments by the board or questions by the board. We think we've addressed those, which include the size of the turnaround to 70 feet. We were able to get that in, got the dumpster relocated, so it's not obstructing that drive at all. Makes it a workable situation. I think Mike has been fine with the current layout. The fire tanks, we've agreed that we would provide a shop drawing to the department prior to construction. Actually, prior to fabrication, we'll get shop drawings in, and once we review them, we'll provide them to the city for review and approval prior to construction or fabrication of those. Another item was asked about was the angle of the access. Access is in compliance with the ordinance. Did look at it, and we believe that once we get that cleared, right away brush out of the way for that DOT has requested us or provided us requirements as part of the entrance, that we'll have distances up to approximately about 850 feet all the way down to Red Bridge Room for site distance on that. So it's still not quite in conformance with the mobility quarter, retrograde mobility quarter for DOT, but it is more than what they have stipulated in their permit to us. Conditions or waivers as part of that permit were recorded and are part of the packet for this approval. There was also a question on impact to the butters well. We were not able to find any data on that well through the well driller or through the state. However, in that research, we did review or see that there are several wells in the area on the MGIS system. All of those are listed at 50 to 100 gallons a minute flow rates. So it's a very high aquifer production area out there. The well driller that did do the butters well, although we couldn't find the information on it, said that the neighboring property for the church was well over 50 gallons a minute production rate. So with the flow rates we're talking about, we don't feel that there's going to be any issue with impacts to that well. I did get data on our well, which provides a static surface elevation approximately 24 feet below the surface. And the well pump is down about 70 feet, but we couldn't determine how deep it was overall below that. But like I say, the main GIS system has those wells listed. I can show you a copy of their data from their online access, if the board wishes. Exterior lighting, we did put a light at the entrance, which was another comment by the board. That'll be a contract light with Versant, because they'll own the pole. It'll be just a light that will go on to the owner's individual bill for that project. And that directly from Versant. And I think that pretty much covers the aspects of what was asked of us and the requirements of the ordinance. And be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Any questions from board members? Yes, John?
I just have one, I guess, or maybe for Mike Haney. I think in the application package someplace, it said that the developer and the fire department would decide where to put the 10,000 gallon tank at some point. I don't see it on the plan. Is that correct, Mike?
It actually is on the plan, from my point. If you, just as you go into the entrance from the Ellsworth side, you'll see that tank, I don't know, it sits, I don't know, what, 25, 30 feet off the road?
Between the first building and the roadway.
Yeah, so it is right there.
Yeah, I see it now. Thank you, Michael. That was just my question.
Any other questions?
One question in section two, the second and third page. This came up last time, Jim. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. So on the second page in section two, we have the waiver from DOT stating the mobility site distance requirement of 990 and the driveway not meeting, or at least currently not meeting, the standard to the right 703. And then on the next page following item three at the very bottom, state's owner must cut and maintain roadside vegetation to the northwest. So on one page, we have left, and the other page, we have northwest. That's unfortunate. To the northwest of proposed driveway. Will that increase the site distance from 703 or 703 the final site distance even after that vegetation removal?
From what I have measured out there after the last board meeting, it should increase the site distance above that 703. The number, I was more closer to about 850 feet. That's a little bit of a guesstimate. I had to pull the device out a little bit further into the, you know, the travel lane to get a good idea on it, but it appears that it's going to be about 850 feet.
And my comments are simply based on that. That stretch of road is a pretty dangerous road, which is not the fault in any way of your development. It's just that stretch of road and adding trips, especially trips coming from a driveway that's already wavered to a shorter site distance. Somewhat imperfect, I suppose. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this matter? Kelly, are you overwhelmed with comments?
Not yet.
Do you, should we wait a little longer? Or looks like there are none.
No, I have nothing from the public on this application.
Any one of the privates here, meaning members of the planning board, wish to say anything else? Does the planning office have any comments?
Yes, I do. If you look at your TRT report, I have a couple comments on there. The applicant has been given Maine Department of Transportation special waiver conditions. I would recommend that those are put on the subdivision forms.
On the which forms?
That you put these on your site and subdivision plans. They're not written, these waivers are not written on the plan. You don't have to do that, but I think it's easier for the codes office to see them write on the plan to know that they have to do this, because DOT does not always grant highway waivers.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, my only response is, I mean, it's already a recorded document. By putting it further in the registry, it just potentially adds for confusion in the future. If something changes, then you have to basically change a subdivision plan, change a recorded document by MDOT. So we felt that it being in there, it's keyed to that property in the recording by MDOT. So we think that's sufficient enough for covering of those criteria. I don't have a problem putting them on the site plan. That's easy to do if that's the case. I'd hate to put them in the registry twice if that's agreeable or okay with the board.
Planning office have any comment? Teresa?
Okay. If you flip the page over, I have a number two. And I've quoted the code, article 14, performance guarantees. It's all written there for you. The applicant should apply more information to address this part of the code.
Teresa, could you say again what that was about? Sorry, I didn't get it all.
That's okay. So under article 14, performance guarantees, 14.2.
Okay.
Code says an applicant should have a construction cost.
I got it.
Go for it. And Jim has pieces of these in his application.
We don't have any public improvements on this project, so we're just providing basically a bank letter indicating that the applicant is discussing it and that the funds are not unreasonable for the magnitude of the project. That was updated as requested by the board to include all the buildings. We bumped the cost number up to about $2.1 million, as we summarized in the application form. There's no public improvement here proposed by this project. We didn't think a bond or a guarantee from that standpoint would be required. I don't believe that the board has required him on other developments such as this in the city either.
Teresa?
The board's responsibility is to follow the code. And perhaps it's a small enough project that there aren't phases of construction. We don't think the developer's going to default with the funds. We really think he's going to finish the road. Maybe that's all good or not. I'm just quoting the code.
This isn't proposed to be a public road. It's just a private road, as noted in the paperwork. It isn't something that the town city would be looking to accept in any form of.
John, I mean, I would be uncomfortable having that in there, that you have some type of performance bond to ensure that construction is completed. We've never done that before. I'm not so sure the city wants to get into position of completing projects if a developer doesn't finish. And I believe this is, I think, the thought was, you mean that Mr. Grass may not necessarily complete all the buildings. He may complete four or five, you know, however many ends up deciding to complete. I'm not in favor of performance bond.
Oh, that's lots.
John, you want me to read three and four?
Sure, go ahead.
Number three says, "The project is not required to provide bicycle pedestrian access." And the code says that you only have to do that if there's sidewalks that you could connect to, or a bike path you could connect to. This is a proposal out. or a bike path you could connect to. This is a proposal out in the rural area. I have suggested that in order to provide safe pedestrian access within the development, that the planning board could request the applicant to install sidewalks within this development. You can require him to do it. You could ask him if he wanted to. That's what number three is about. And I'll just read number four. Single family attached or detached dwelling units are exempt from buffers, screening, and landscaping standards in your city code. You'd ask the applicant if he could screen around the trash receptacle, and you have, right, Jim, on the plan?
Yeah, we put a fence around the trash.
Which is excellent. He didn't have to do that, and he did, to make the property more visually attractive, if you will. You, I don't know if you want to ask him to um, do any other leading of vegetation. He doesn't have to. You could ask him. Our code does not make him do that because he's a single family attached or detached dwelling unit. Those are all my thoughts.
Any reactions from the planning board?
Uh, regarding item number three, the, the proposed sidewalks. Sidewalks in developments in Ellsworth are not unique. Uh, they're, they're anything but ubiquitous. And I'd have a similar concern with this one, what John raised earlier, that it would seem to be setting a precedent.
Jim, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, you know, I think this was discussed at the preliminary uh, meeting uh, without uh, any real um, preference by the board to install them. Uh, the staff at the TRT meeting didn't have any comments on it. Uh, as far as preference for the uh, sidewalks or anything to go in. Uh, also as a reminder, I mean, this is a, these are all one-bedroom apartments. So there's really not going to be any children uh, within the development. It's all geared towards uh, uh, professionals and, and empty nesters, uh, since it's only one-bedroom, uh, fairly small units. So we don't think that there's uh, heavy concern. Most of the traffic or most of the people are going to be in and out with vehicles from that standpoint, so. Uh, it's very small um, traffic uh, generation rates within the development also, so. Uh, we don't feel that there's a need for it. Goes from my own development not having it, and we got 70 some houses in it. There's been no issues with sidewalks not being in the development.
Planning board members?
I would just say as a matter of principle, I really uh, I, I share Teresa's concern in terms of uh, you know, sidewalks for all as, as far as, you know, as, as ubiquitous as we can do it. However, this is all private. It's not a public street. And uh, I don't think there's anything that we can do that I see to require that, so. You know, if, if we want to do that sort of thing, I think that's a, a, one of the checklist items for uh, comprehensive plan and/or revision of this ordinance down the line. So, you know. I can't see if we can make him do that.
I'd like to add something to that also. Um, when you start adding the sidewalks, it changes the dynamics of the design of the road, allowing for that 70-foot turnaround. Um, you, you may have a, you may have a subdivision or, or development like this with a narrow street that won't get that 70-foot design in the turnaround with, with sidewalks on both sides. So it's, it's a catch-22 situation, do you or don't you? And if you require the sidewalks, are they going to have the room to make that turnaround? So, you know, we, and, and so it's, it's, it's important that we recognize that. I've actually put writing in, given some writing to Teresa for actually an option to that 70 feet uh, that may be added to the ordinance a little bit later. But right now, I think if you add the sidewalks, you're going to change the dynamics and design of the road. You probably won't get that 70 feet.
I would, I would uh, agree with Rick that it's not a requirement of the ordinance. If it were, then that would be, then it would affect how you designed your turnarounds and that would be taken care of at that point. I assume Jim does not disagree with that.
No, it does. I mean, it, it changes the whole complexity of the road once you start adding sidewalks and curbing into it and the design associated with that. Uh, it does make a significant difference.
I think it's a battle to be fought another day.
Yes, that's why there's always the mark-two version. Does any member of the public wish to comment upon this application? Carrie?
I have no comment.
Okay, Mark? You wish to say something?
Jim, I have a question. Yeah, I just have a question that's been troubling my mind since I first saw this if the, the buildings are 2,544 square feet and you're referring to them as small one-bedrooms, it looks to me like each unit's going to be about 1,200 square feet. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
It's a size one-bedroom.
Yeah, but when you're looking at people downsizing and stuff, it's not necessarily a large area. You know, you got one bedroom, oh, excuse me, also inside that is a garage. So you have to take the garage out of that area also, so that you you're much smaller than that, not counting the garage. That's for the whole structural size.
That makes sense to me. Okay.
So what would the board like to do? Other than escape, what would we like to do?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plan review for a major use sub, uh, use site development, a major subdivision entitled Kelly Estates for Steve and Grass with the other details we added to that.
Can I make one, one comment on that?
Sure.
Is, the applicant is actually Kelly uh, Estates LLC. Steve is the owner of the property. But the applicant's actually um, Kelly Way LLC.
So we should strike the last couple words there?
Yeah, it's not for Steve Grass. It's for Kelly Way LLC.
I was just reading for the agenda, but I, I'm good with that.
That's all right. I, I, I noticed that before and I was, I meant to write something in the application, but I forgot myself, so.
Uh, the road to hell is paved with good intentions.
And it's, eventually it's the same person, but it's just a different entity for the same, for the same person.
You need a second?
Yes, we do need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, just beat me to it. Any just, any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a suggestion of a friendly amendment that the TRT language that describes the M-dot permit waiver requirements, item number one, A, B, and C on the TRT be included in Rick's original motion.
Is that acceptable?
Personally.
John?
Yes, I'll, I'll go along with it. My second.
Okay. So, any further discussion?
I would have a question on that. Could it just go on the site plan rather than on the recording plan?
I, I think
My amendment was for the, for the motion.
On the site plan, I, I'm okay with that personally.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I, I think the confusion was my, the, the friendly amendment was point one, A, B, and C. I, I, I did not presume to include the uh, M-dot special waiver conditions are included on the site and subdivision plans. That last sentence, I did not presume to be included, although we can discuss that.
Anyone wish to discuss it? In that case, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please? Mark, are you with us? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, Jim?
Yes, thank you very much.
It's done.
Yep. Teresa, we're going to be trying to get that. We have plans down at the office now. Uh, but I guess the, the registry's only taking paper copies now, so that's what we brought in uh, for signature. Um, and Teresa said the city still wants a MYLAR, so we're going to try to get that into you by tomorrow morning, Teresa, if all possible, so.
And I, John, may I?
Mm-hmm.
I, I wanted to explain, um, and I, the code says that we have to have a MYLAR. And Jim is correct that the registry does not have these anymore. We need to change that in our code so that we are again, I'm putting a whole bunch of code, little tiny changes like that and bringing that forward to you guys during the holidays so we can clean up our code. And that would help, right, Jim, to consistent with what the registry nowadays accepts. But for now, we have to have a signed MYLAR.
Okay. But Teresa, I would note that anything that reduces the number of signatures required is not unwelcome.
Thank everybody very much. Have a nice.
You're welcome. Now, the next item is a final plan review for revision to a previously approved Mazer subdivision plan entitled Megan Fellis subdivision for Craig T. Fellis. The proposal is to adopt and record an easement for, for and update the fire protection method from for residential type sprinkler system to a 10,000 gallon cistern to be installed on lot one of the property located on the Mariahville Road, tax map 117, lot 20 in the residential zone. Someone representing the applicant, please?
Andrew McCullough.
Go ahead, please.
Well, it, it's kind of interesting that we're back here after a year or two years when we had a pretty extensive discussion about the choice between residential sprinklers and installing a tank. And at the time, the applicant chose to put the language on the plan to utilize residential sprinklers. The owner now, Craig T. Fellis, as a result of the passing of Megan Fellis, decided that he would like to make this small revision, if you will, uh, and is willing to install a 10,000 gallon uh, cistern per the ordinance and install it in the corner of lot one, if you will, near the road to provide for fire protection for this Megan T. Fellis subdivision.
Mike Haney, do you have any remarks on this? He knows what's coming.
I have, I have actually looked at the plan. We've talked with Andrew. We've actually talked with um, Mr. Fellis as well concerning this. Um, and everything is appropriate as far as the, the location of the tank. Um, he's created a bump out that gets us well off of Route 180 uh, to be able to utilize that tank um, and uh, supply water protection for the fire, for that subdivision. Um, the only thing I haven't asked Andrew is to um, supply for us the shop drawings of the tank prior to installation so that we can, so we can approve them prior to installation. And I know he wouldn't have a problem with that. Um, so we have, we have actually reviewed it. Um, we're acceptable to the proposal for the change of, of this, um, for this subdivision.
Thank you.
And we will provide those shop drawings to Mike for review. Um, because Mike and I did have some discussion as to where the uh, draft location will be cited on the tank.
Okay, and lot one is a developable lot, I assume?
Yes, it is.
Now, will there be a recording of an easement for that tank and the access to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I believe, I mean, this, this change to the plan, I, this lot has not been transferred, and so by the recording of this plan, then the lot that is transferred will have the easement on it, yes.
Ah, okay. I was just thinking of possible complications in this.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yes, question, um, on Michael's letter to to Andrew, uh, for paragraph number two, the Road Owners Association developer or property owner for the subdivision shall maintain, et cetera. I mean, I don't see where there is a road owners association. I mean, I'm I'm not clear on how this tank is actually going to be maintained. I mean, is Craig Fellis going to maintain it? Is the lot owner of, of lot one going to maintain it? I, I mean, I think it's, it's not very clear who is actually going to maintain this.
The, the intent of the ordinance, and maybe it needs to be cleared up, John, but the intent of the ordinance is basically either a homeowners association or a road owners association, or the developer would maintain the tank, the, the, the integrity of the tank, um, making sure it's clear, et cetera, et cetera. It's not something that the city is going to take over to, 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 to maintain. So it's, it's all of either the developer or if that subdivision so decides to put together a homeowners association, somebody needs to take care of that tank, and so that's something that needs to be worked out.
It.
I'd like to see that worked out before we approve this. Uh, Andrew, do you have any comments?
It, it is, um, the owner's intent to maintain it, or the developer's intent to maintain it.
Even after all lots are sold?
Yes.
Um, we should probably, yeah, go ahead, John.
I was going to say, I mean, if that's the case, then I certainly think that it should be, you know, that Craig Fellis is going to maintain it. Um, but it's still, I, I still kind of wonder, you know, what happens if, when Craig passes away, you know, who, who maintains it after that? Can you help me out here, Andrew?
Well, um, I think that I mean, we could, we could put a note on the plan that said, that says the the owner or the developer, the developer will maintain it on unless or until such time that a homeowners association is formed to maintain the tank. I, I think that makes it so that one or the other needs to be, or continue to be in place to to maintain it. I, I mean, I think, I think, I think a note like that is covers it myself.
Well, suppose the lot owners then decide, we don't want a homeowners association. And the developer is nowhere around to perform that. I mean, I hate to say it, but it's easier in a sense if we don't accept this change, because then the sprinkler systems do that. You see what I'm getting at, Andrew?
Yeah, I see, I see your point.
Andrew, is there any particular reason that, I mean, you now want to put in a 10,000 gallon tank instead of having the Andrew, is there any particular reason that, I mean, you now want to put in a 10,000 gallon tank instead of having the sprinkler system? I mean, it seems like a sprinkler system is a lot easier and no headache.
Well, I, I think, you know, um, I think some of the potential buyers out there would rather see or rather have a tank and not have the, um, have the residential sprinkler system. So I think there's been some interest from that standpoint. And so I, I think, um, that's what's driven the decision or the proposal.
That's the case, that it's a value add or, or seen as a potential value add for, for the buyers. That would seem to lend itself to the argument that the homeowners association established and those homeowners that are recognizing that value also assume the responsibility for the tank.
But that's not in the approved plan. A requirement for homeowners association, is it? So perhaps the revision should also include the requirement for a homeowners association to, to maintain the tank and the road is a public road or not?
Though, though, well, the road's, the road's a public road. I mean, Route 180.
Yeah.
Um, Mariahville Road.
So seems like a homeowners association to maintain the tank.
So let's, let's put on the plan that a homeowners association will be created to maintain the tank.
Okay, but that's not on the application that's before us. So is this any rush?
Um, there, there is a desire, yes. I, I mean, if you could condition it, I, I could make a change to the final plan and reprint it tomorrow. The, the applicant did call me today and he was very desirous to market this lot particularly with this change.
Andrew, is the plan on living on lot one, Z?
No, 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 no. It's to be marketed and sold.
Okay, and I guess another question would be, is if we grant this change, does the tank immediately or in the near future install pending scale of lots? I mean, we've seen many subdivisions that go on the market and the lots don't sell for a year, two years, three years?
Um, it, it it, it's his intent that this tank would go in, you know, upon Mike Hingy's approval of the, of the layout of the, of the cistern itself, that it would go in within, he, Craig told me today that the lead time for making one is about two weeks. And so he would anticipate installing it by the end of, approximately the end of September.
May I suggest that the board could approve this change with the conditions that there be a, with the plan show a requirement for homeowners association and that the tank, this tank go in say by, by the end of September?
I wonder if it's appropriate for the board to require a homeowners association. I mean, I agree that it would be nice to have it that way. But, uh, you know, if the, if the owner says it's going to be this or this, don't we have to take that at face value as opposed to saying it's going to have to be some other way?
I'm curious here.
Nelson?
I, I, I'm curious here to hear Mike's opinion on this point. I think what we're imagining is a undesired case scenario where the tank goes unmaintained and then perhaps it's needed and it's not functional. Mike, what, what are your thoughts about a potential future condition where the tank has gone unmaintained for years perhaps and then it's utilized?
Uh, I think, you know, the, the, the idea of the, of the tank and the inspection of the tank would be the, the attachments to the tank basically that are visible, such as the, the draft connection, the fill connection, the vent, all those things that are above ground. I think, you know, those, those things can be taken care of fairly easily by just an inspection or taking a look at it to maintain it. The only, the, the two biggest things is making sure that the tank is full. So that would be something that somebody could check very easily. And the other thing is like in the wintertime, basically the removal of snow from that bump out to get that away, to get that so that it's accessible. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot that needs to be maintained with this tank. I mean, it's, 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 there are several of them in the city right now and, um, we've seen no really problems with them. In fact, we've got one out off the Bayside Road, up off a subdivision that's been in for, I don't know how many years. And it's just basically the maintenance is just keeping the snow clear off of it. Yeah, just a regular inspection of the attachment points above the, above ground. So there's really not a whole lot that needs to be taken care of unless, and I don't think this is going to be an issue there, unless there's a lot of trees and stuff like that that are going to grow up that's going to be impacting that tank, which I doubt very seriously in the location that it's at.
Well, to my ears, that addresses one of two things we've talked about, which is it doesn't sound like there's a great cost associated with the maintenance, so on delay, I was concerned that what if it, what if there were only one, one lot owner, it would fall on that owner's shoulders. Sounds like that might actually be not a terrible burden. Uh, but it does not address Rick's question of, is this even something we can enforce in the first place?
I know the other thing that we talked about with Mr. Fellis was that with that tank that's going in there and this, this may even be a moot point for the whole process, but with that tank there, we've discussed with him, if in the, if there's a situation where we need water supply for a major fire out in that area other than that subdivision, we have that water tank available, we have that water supply available for a house or somewhere else away from that subdivision that's close by. If we use that water, you know, the fire department will replace that water. But it's, it's a situation where it not only protects that subdivision, but, you know, in discussing with him, we could use that for other, other subdivisions as well. I think right next door is a Rossborough subdivision, Andrew, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that right next door was originally Craig Fellis's Upper Lakewood subdivision. So yes, there's lots there that it would benefit immediately adjacent to it. But it would, it would also, as you say, be available for, for your use in an emergency anywhere nearby.
Yep.
Well, we still have the issue of who's maintaining the tank.
Right.
Andrew, um, would, would Mr. Fellis object to having those, that language put in the plan?
Which, I guess, which language are we going to go with? There, we, we've thrown out a couple ideas.
So the, the idea of, of the requirement for homeowners association who would maintain the tank, and that's not a terrible burden, obviously. And what was the other thing? My mind is going. Rick, do you remember? Unmute yourself, please.
What the plan says is that the fire protection maintenance of the chosen fire protection option shall remain the responsibility of the developer, call a property owner or road property owners association. So on the plan, I mean, on, on the drawing, that note is there. And what I'm, what I'm saying is that, uh, it doesn't seem to me that what's, it's within our purview to require someone to have a road, uh, you know, road, uh, association.
However, if the applicant volunteers to do so.
Well, I mean, I, the, the desire, I mean, the, the initial plan, I mean, Craig's plan was to maintain it himself.
Yes.
If, if we needed to, if we absolutely need to create a homeowners association, yes, we can go in that direction, but, um, you know, the, the, our, our original intent was for the developer at this point to be responsible.
Yeah, well, but you heard the concern of the board that what happens if Mr. Fellis is not there?
Right, right, no.
The homeowners association, by the way, could be limited to the maintenance of the tank.
Yeah.
Which, which means that their, each individual property owner's burden is, is minimal.
Right. No, I, I, yeah.
If I'm, if I'm reading you right, Rick, is that it, it's not within the purview of the planning board to require a homeowners association?
Well, I think, I think that's correct. I'm not positive. I mean, I suppose it could be some little progress someplace, but.
And I think that's why that wording that you're reading that's on the plan is part of the fire prevention ordinance of the city of Ellsworth. Because we knew that you didn't have the purview to require it. That's why we included it in our ordinance, the fire prevention ordinance, to be developer or owner or homeowners association or whatever. So it's in our ordinance that those, those options are there for requirements.
Was it an option for requirement or is it a requirement in the fire protection?
It, it's a requirement in the fire prevention ordinance to one of those entities have to maintain it.
Okay.
Not any particular one, just one of the three.
Yes, that is correct. We gave them the option to, you know, pick and choose which one.
Okay, so regardless of the plan, the fire department will ensure that something is taken care of, uh, in essence. Okay. That clears my mind. Is it, uh, have I opened the public hearing for this yet?
No.
Okay.
That is so that you're public hearing this, right?
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this matter? Carrie, tell me there's someone who wants to comment.
I'm sorry, I have nothing on this, John.
Did you say something, Carrie?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're public, so to speak. You wish to comment?
I decline on that. Thank you, though. Thanks for the offer.
You're welcome. All right, what would the board like to do at this point?
I make a motion that the board approves the final.
One moment, please. Just, Teresa, do you have anything?
No, thank you for asking.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
I would like to have the board, make the motion that the board approves the final plan for revision to previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Megan Fellis subdivision for Craig T. Fellis with the other details that are on the agenda, which is basically the 1,000, 10,000 gallon tank.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there discussion? No, huh? Okay, all in favor, please? Thank you.
All right.
Now, before the next item, which is adjournment, I would just
Thank.
Comment to, comment to Molly that her light is fading. Not her inner light, but her external light.
Well, that could be both.
So the next item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, please? We stand adjourned.